Hi folks, this is Mayor Sagata. And with me is...
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Commissioner Chatterley.
And Commissioner Chavez.
And Rattone is your pass.
Your pass to new beginnings.
Your pass to clear blue water.
Your pass in land of enchantment.
Your pass to the good life.
Your pass to a half a million acres of exciting outdoor adventure.
So we invite you to get out there.
And enjoy our town.
And all we have to offer.
Rattone, your pass.
Pick a photo or whatever and pick their tagline and kind of mix and match and make their own ad. And then the pre-designed taglines will be a part of those assets too. And then within the next year, like I said, we hope to have the final photography style guide and a collection of photos for people to use for that. Let's see. Layton Moon is also conceptualizing designs for wayfinding signage, little arrows and whatnot around town. And I saw some of their first ideas last night as well. They sent an email kind of later in the evening. And so we're just working on getting something before we bring it to the commission that we all really like. So we've got some wayfinding ideas already. And they are working on the monument signage drawings as well. So we're going to be looking at those and bringing them to you guys. And Scott and I met with the Chamber, uh, few, three Chamber Board members on January 29th at City Hall regarding the visitor center using the new brand. At this time, they would accept a large plastic sign with the new logo for the front of the counter and one to two pop-up banners advertising local sites. They also expressed the need for a relocation brochure. And they are definitely interested in outdoor signage at some point. So we're going to be seeing what we can do to meet those needs. The next few steps for us, we're, um, on the radar is adopting the branded city seal, drafting a plan for merchandising or, uh, the different items with logos and whatnot on it. And trying to use local vendors for that plan. Creating a quarterly partnership meeting once we have several partners and some kind of official partner designation. Developing, like I said before, the internal brand as a promise initiative. Creating those templates and guidelines. We also are possibly looking at creating a set of postcards that advertise history, adventure, and outdoor recreation that can be given out. Creating that relocation information. And we have plans right now to attend the health fair in April with some more giveaways. So anybody who missed giveaways at Christmas is their next chance to get some goodies. From here on out, we're going to move to monthly meetings and just keep up over email because we've been really, really busy. And I think that'll, I think we're at that point where we can do that. And our next meeting will be Monday, March 11th at noon at the Center for Community Innovation. That's that one. Then I have the Beautification Coalition. Met on February 6th at noon at the Aquatics Center. I was able to attend over the phone. The Summer of Color was featured in the January Rattone Natural Gas Pipeline newsletters. I'd like to thank Rattone Natural Gas for that. Um, right now, this is where we look with funding. There is $3,000 left over from last year's donations that's being held at Grow Rattone. As I mentioned, last month, we received $2,000 from the Macron Foundation in January. And we just recently received $950 from the Darden Foundation. And that'll go towards the benefit concert expenses. A portion of funds raised from the Vermejo Brunches, which I guess are almost completely full already, pretty quick. So there's going to be a good portion of funds raised from that that will go to support the Summer of Color. And then the benefit concert will be March 16th at the Schuler. And that's an acoustic guitar concert with three artists. The opening artist is local Zoe Elliott, which should be entertaining. And then we have Michael Delala from Denver and Jackie Gibson from Trinidad. And tickets will be $10 at the door. I had mentioned last time, the fundraiser Classic Night at the Movies is going to be, uh, but we have the date. It's going to be Wednesday, May 29th. And it will be Disney's animated Peter Pan. We've also submitted, uh, funding proposals for 2019 to the Macron, White Egg Slope Prince, Wells Fargo, and BarNI foundations. We're, we're looking at putting up eight-foot pennants along Clayton Road and South Second Street in colors matching the downtown banners. Last year, those little flags down there, they were really small. And you know, as, as we're just trying to get something down there. So this year, we're looking at something to make a bigger impact. The smaller flags that were down there, we're going to try to move downtown this summer. And there'll be a few more wrapped light poles with those lights. We're going to have to replace some. We had a little bit of vandalism and then some of those LED lights just wear out pretty fast. Especially because we turned them back on through Christmas. And we'll be wrapping more poles on North Second and South First. There, we're still collecting events for our Summer of Color marketing initiative with a poster and a lot of social media work. So please let me know or you can let Jared at the Aquatics Center know or Jessica, I'm sure, can collect those events too. And we don't have a meeting scheduled at this time. Other than that, North Central Mexico Economic Development District hasn't met since December. Their next meeting is March 15th in Santa Fe and I should be able to go to that. And the Lodger's Tax Board hasn't met since November. And the Senior Board, I haven't been able to go, so I'll leave that for Mayor Scott if he's okay with that.
The seniors, we're meeting now every other month, so we have not met since the last, since January.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jacomo.
Library Board, there was no Library Board meeting that held in February 2019. The next Library Board meeting will be scheduled for March 19th, 2019, 5:30 PM. Rattone Public Service and Rattone City Commission joint special meeting was held on February 12th, 2019, 2019 at 5:00 PM. Deliberation, the deliberation and approval of the consent and excitement agreement between the City of Rattone and Guzman Energy LLC was approved by both departments, board members. And the City of Rattone consent and assignment agreement between the Twin Eagle Resource Management LLC and XL Energy was postponed to a later date. The next RPS Board meeting will be tomorrow night, February 27th, 2019, at 5:30 PM. That's all I've got up here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chavez.
My Water Board meeting, I give to Commissioner Schuster. And the Finance Advisory Board, I'll give back to Michael Ann. I wasn't able to make either one.
Okay. Mayor Protem Schuster.
Well then. I'll start with today. There was a Housing Authority Board meeting. And their highlights are, uh, they'll have a new, uh, computer, uh, internet service where you can apply for housing online. And I, I'm not sure if that's already up and running, but it's very, very close. It should be up and running, um, very soon if you need to apply online or you can pay your rent online as well. They have an audit in process. It's not completed yet. They have several repairs underway, uh, both here and at the housing in Maxwell. And the summer food, training, and application is coming up and they'll be, Colleen will be dealing with that. So that'll be happening again this year. The Water Board met on February 21st and, um, we, we did not have chocolate or donuts, so Commissioner Chavez was unable to attend.
I'll write that down.
However, at this point, or as of that date, Lake Malaya was, has come up to where it is just five feet, um, five and a half feet below the spillway. And we'll, um, continue to get the majority of water. About 90% is coming from the Simroon system at this time. There, there's the filter plant project continues to progress and the contract, contractor will be mobilized to Rattone sometime in March. The, um, Dam Safety Bureau, uh, that we've requested funding for, to get from the Dam Safety Bureau to get that Lake Malaya project, uh, continued and funded. And, um, one of the things that is in, will be coming up is the nutrient, wastewater nutrient, which is why it passed out to everybody here. And if anybody else wants one, call me. Uh, the main, one of the main sources of phosphorus is in your dishwashing soap that you use for the dishwasher. And, um, there are phosphate-free dishwasher soaps available. So we're going to be, uh, kind of promoting people switching to those phosphate-free dishwasher packets or soaps. Um, and that's about the biggest highlights. So, um, February 4th, well, let me move to February 8th, was the meeting of Energized, which is a kind of a group that has representatives from both the Center for Community Innovation as well as Grow Rattone. And their primary focus is on, um, alternative energy and, and helping create a more energy-efficient Rattone. So they will be focusing on, they'll be attending the meeting tomorrow night on the solar. There'll be representatives there. They'll also be helping us promote the phosphate-free and helping decrease your phosphate use in your households so that our water department doesn't have to clean it up so much. February 4th was the Board meeting of the Community for, um, or Center, Center for Community Innovation. And they are working hard and diligently on, on creating, um, that training program for economic development as well as partnering with Trinidad. So they're, they have, uh, they're making some progress on utilizing those funds. Also, the evening of February 4th was the Chamber Board meeting. They have, um, their membership has increased. They have hired a Visitor Center Coordinator. He started on the 18th. I think his name is Caleb. Uh, and some of the, the volunteers there have already met him and reported back to me that they, they think he's going to do a good job. So that'll be good. They've hired someone to do the yard work at the visitor center. And they've, they've hired a IT contract. Excuse me, my voice is going to go out. Um, and they're looking at possibilities of, and ways for dealing with a gift shop. They're hoping to work that out. And they're working closely with Scott on that. So I think that'll be a good thing once they get it worked out. That's pretty much all I have. Mr. Campbell has more to report on the Water Board.
No, I would just add that we did approve a resolution that RPS will also be very into work. We're probably the first meeting next month, which will actually be through credit debit and online payments and utility bills.
I forgot that. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Moving into the 21st century.
Well, and the Housing Authority said, we've even beat out the utilities. I said, no, we just voted on that last week, so. I remembered it earlier today.
All right. As for myself, I did attend the same Chamber Committee meeting. And then the New Mexico Municipal Executive Committee had a, their Board meeting last Wednesday down in Santa Fe. Uh, we did have a private audience with the governor. And she stated some of her goals for the state. She also made it, uh, made us aware that she's going to try and be more of a face-to-face governor than what we've experienced the last eight years. To where she seems like she's going to have that open door policy. We'll wait and see. She said, I'm going to be a combination of them all, you know? She said, I'm not going to let everybody in like some of the predecessors, but I'm not going to keep the door shut like our previous governor. So we'll see where that goes. Uh, she did have some, got into a little bit of discussion about capital outlay and how it affects smaller communities. Her main, what, where we got there, of course, I brought up senior citizens. And she says, yes, that whole system needs to be revamped because right now, in her words, we're set up to fail in our capital outlay procedure there. When we make an application, as opposed to the city, it's like a page and a half, two-page application. I have to fill out a 20-page application just to buy a van. And she says, you're set up to fail. So that was interesting and enlightening. So that got me thinking about things. So I looked up online how much capital outlay has been distributed in our area. And from 2011 to 2016, Colface County has received about $6.8 million in capital outlay. Our neighbors to the south in San Miguel County have received $54.3 million in that same timeframe. Not quite even. We have the same representative. So I, I'd like to see a little more equal balance there. And to even throw that into another, uh, aspect, Bernalillo County in the same timeframe has received $202.3 million in capital outlay. So the little guys are, are still getting squeezed out. Hopefully, um, with her talking about it and that, maybe some kind of change will, will come in capital outlay. Just wait and see how that goes. But other than that, I don't have any other reports. So we will move into the business section of the meeting. Item 7A, approval of the February 12th, 2019 special joint meeting minutes and the regular commission meeting minutes. Minutes were in your packet. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I did have one minor correction just on the heading of the regular minutes. It's the 6:00 PM. I had the 2019 on there twice.
No.
I fixed that, but.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the February 12th, 2019 special meeting minutes and the regular commission meeting minutes.
A second. Yeah, a motion and a second to approve both sets of meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, deliberate enact on lodger's tax, non-promotional funding request from Rattone Country Club for sprinkler system improvements. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, commission in your packet, you have a request from, uh, the Rattone Country Club, uh, and regarding the municipal golf course. Uh, we also have a couple of representatives, uh, present here tonight to answer your questions that the commission, uh, might have in regard to this request. Uh, I would, uh, not probably try to preempt their comments and I think we would, uh, call on the representatives. I would just say that, uh, in general, what you see is a request, uh, that in part or all of the requests is regarding irrigation system of the course. And of course, in past, uh, years, the city has participated in providing water to the course, uh, and, uh, the irrigation system on the course. Of course, that's critical and, uh, it's kind of a mutually beneficial system because we water that with reclaimed water, which, uh, we, we use on really all of our recreational facilities. And, uh, when we talk about the nutrients issue, one of the answers to that is to apply that and not discharge it, which is, is a lot easier in warm months than it is in cold months. But, uh, it's potentially expanding that use is something that we would look at as well. Um, so I think it's, uh, good for the course. It's good for all of our recreational areas and, uh, there's, there's benefit for us. So I just say that to kind of preference, the, preface the comments, uh, from the representatives here. And Mayor, I would, uh, I would pass that back to you and we can get additional information from the President.
Sure. Devin, do you want to address that?
Absolutely. Thank you. Devin Barton, uh, President of the Rattone Country Club, thanks for the opportunity here. Uh, want to start the comments by saying we have a tremendous opportunity coming up because, uh, this is the 100th, uh, anniversary of the golf club out there. And what a historic and fantastic gem to the city that this golf course really is. And I would present to the council that we have an opportunity to not only continue to make that a fantastic gem, but I think we can enhance it and really help what we're doing with the community and potentially pull in more tourism based on what's happening out there at that golf course. So, uh, just a couple of quick things, you know? Historically, the club members have certainly kept and maintained that course throughout the years. Uh, and I think they've done a nice job of making that happen. Uh, certainly that does not go, uh, without the help of the City of Rattone and the water department. I think that relationship is critical. Uh, as Scott had mentioned, uh, we've got a fantastic relationship. We want to maintain that. And if anything, I think we want to enhance that. And what I mean by that is that I think we have an opportunity to fix what we would consider a fading infrastructure out there. Uh, that infrastructure is no less than 20 years old and in some spots as much as 40 years old. And for those reasons, uh, we are, uh, spending a tremendous amount of outlay to continue to repair that and make sure that we've got a golf course, course that is presentable not only to the city, but, but to the folks that come and play that from, from out of the area as well. And so, um, some of the things that we've done, this doesn't go just as a pure ask. And what I mean by that too, is that we've got an opportunity, uh, to enhance what we've already doing. We've got some significant challenges out there, as I mentioned. And some of those challenges, we've got shrinking membership. We've got difficulty in certainly raising prices on our current members simply based on the fact that they're used to paying those numbers. They've been paying those numbers for a long time. And while we're keeping up with inflation on one hand, it's yet another to ask them to continue to pay more and more every single year. Uh, I talked about the deteriorating infrastructure. We've got some substantial debts out there. And of course, we've got, uh, a lack of a reliable workforce to say the least out there. And so all of those things are the challenges that we're up against. But some of the things that we've done in terms of our own, uh, will here is we've hired a general manager out there in Joe Pobar. And he's done an absolutely fantastic job in not only helping us get organized, but also putting us all in one direction so that we are, uh, engaged in, in taking on this challenge here. So he's out there providing golf daily, sunup to sundown, okay? And that's obviously in, in the season, but even in these winter months, he's still out there. We've got to make something happen. So he's out there cleaning things up. He's making sure that we've got all the things in place so that when the season starts, we're ready and up and running. Additionally, uh, we've had through grants, a disc golf course added from the last couple of years out there. Uh, and while we think that that is a huge enhancement, uh, there are some playability issues with the disc golf course out there. And we'd like to be able to kind of move that around a little bit to make it more playable, more inviting. And with your help, we do believe that we can offer free disc golf out there to the general public as well as tourists. And we do believe that that's, that's going to, uh, pull money back into our system here, especially with lodger's tax. So, uh, the other thing is we're offering a Phineon Club, a fine dining membership club out there. Going out and trying to get something to eat in a small town can be challenging sometimes. And if we can offer something that's a little bit different, you can't keep here every day, this is one of the fantastic things that we offer as part of that fine dining club. We also offer league nights out there. Uh, so we talk about recreation and all the things that there are to do in the City of Rattone, and this is definitely one of them. And we want more participation in these leagues. But these leagues have been very, very profitable for the club. And in turn, we believe that we can actually spend this money back around and turn it into lodger's tax. And I'll, I'll get to that in a minute about how we're going to do that. But, um, additionally, we've offered a number of tournaments, uh, that have pulled in guests from outside of our city, outside of our state. And that in turn is, is turning into lodger's tax dollars. And, uh, while we have not been diligent about necessarily tracking exactly what those numbers look like, uh, that will be something that we intend to do going forward to really track those numbers and show how much money we're actually pulling in simply based on, on that attraction of the golf course out there. Um, of course, we've got all kinds of special events out there, weddings, birthday parties. Uh, we've got county events, all kinds of different business things going on out there. And all of those things have proven to be extremely profitable for us. But even with all those efforts, we simply can't keep up with the infrastructure problems that we're running into with the sprinkler system. Now, we do believe that we can do better. And I think the biggest thing that we're talking about here is being able to promote tourism for the City of Rattone. And the way that we plan to do that is, is we would like to be able to offer free golf to anyone who stays in a Rattone hotel or motel of any kind. So the bottom line is if you show up with a paid receipt from one of those places where you've stayed, you're going to play free golf at our golf course. Okay? We believe that we can promote that through a number of different sources. Uh, I've gotten some backup and some help from Jessica at the Center. Uh, we are going to start having her take over some of the website duties and be able to promote that, not only through the city, but also some of the Jack Rabbit, the existing sites that are out there where we're already pulling in people who want to stay here. If we can allow them to stay and play for free, we believe that we can not only replace any dollars that we're asking for tonight, but we think that we can actually increase those dollars. Okay? Um, also, uh, we really feel like, uh, we can mean more to the community. What we mean by that is if we're able to offer the highest level of golf course and playability, uh, our intention is to offer more events that haven't been traditionally offered out there. So things for kids that haven't been done. We're going to have the Easter egg hunt. We had the Christmas, uh, party this last year. We intend to potentially have movies on the green, uh, potentially concerts in the park, other things that will allow the community to participate and really take advantage of these facilities that we think we can offer out there. But the big ask is to make this all happen, we've got to have a functioning sprinkler system. It's got to be nice green grass. It's got to be beautiful. It's got to be attractive. It's got to be the gem that we all know it can be. And to do that, we'd like to ask the City Commission for $25,000 from the non-promotional lodger's tax fund. And, uh, in exchange for that consideration, we're going to promote that tourism and we're going to offer more to the community than we've ever done before. That's what I have to offer. I do have a couple of supporting folks here in terms of, uh, people that, uh, that believe in this concept and believe that they can help us promote that if you'd like to hear from them. But, um, I wouldn't ask any questions that you've got for me at this point.
Questions?
I, I do have one. So is that 25,000 strictly for the sprinkler system? Is there?
I'm going to say 80% is our intention to go directly into the infrastructure of the sprinkler system. The other 20% would be for, uh, the aging equipment that we've got out there that needs to be either replaced or repaired. Um, you know, we've got nice green grass grown. We've got to be able to cut it. We've got to be able to maintain a course that's playable. And so, uh, while we do have equipment out there, uh, it would be nice to be able to replace some of that and make sure that, uh, we've got it all up to date and, and we got the ability to maintain the grass that we're growing.
Because, yeah, reading this earlier today, that was, that's what I would like to, to see is that, you know, a breakdown of.
An actual breakdown, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to present that if, if, if that's what's necessary to do. But I will just say that, like I said, about 80% of the money is to go to the, to the sprinkler system. The balance of that would go to the equipment. Uh, in particular, we're looking specifically at aerators. We're looking at, uh, mowers that, that have been beaten for the last 20 years. So, uh, those would be the places we'd like to do that. If you're looking for an itemized list, I can certainly put that together.
I know there are certain conditions, Mr. Barry, for non-promo. I'm wondering if equipment would be allowable.
It's a judgment call. I'd say that, uh, you know, equipment, more equipment is, is probably questionable for more perspective. Uh, we have participated in irrigation system.
Right.
Previously, I don't know about with lodger's tax, but, uh, you know, we've got some consideration, uh, in, in exchange for that before. And, and really that consists of, uh, public access to the course. And so it's a country club, privately owned course, but it's operated like a municipal course would be. And so that's consideration. I think in the discussion of the disc golf, uh, we could probably work in that consideration item that there. To me, Mayor, I think the machinery, the equipment costs, that's, uh, that's a little questionable. I, I personally would feel, uh, probably justified with the sprinkler, uh, system item. Just my opinion.
Yeah, that's, the way I've read the, the statute, yeah, the equipment's going to be a hard sell for lodger's tax. Sprinkler system, I think we can do. One of my other concerns though too, is I've, I've heard we've been charging green fees for the disc golf.
Yeah. In fact, one of the things that we had been considering was actually a membership fee. Uh, and the reason for that is that our current members of the golf club feel like, well, why should anybody get to play out here if the rest of us have to play these membership fees? Now, of course, my personal riposte to that is that if this golf course, this disc golf course was put in under grant money, it's already been paid for. And our feeling is that because there are no, uh, other disc golf courses where you need to pay, we would like to be able to offer that outside of the City of Rattone. And that's where the free disc golf would come into this entire equation. So if we were able to get this help, we would not, we would be able to maintain the course and then also be able to offer that free disc golf to everyone, whether they're a Rattone resident or, or not. or not. And that's ultimately where I think we can be competitive then. The other thing is, and I think this is important to understand, is that if we do offer disc golf out there in a much more playable format, our disc golfers believe that they can pull in tournaments, and those tournaments again are how we're going to replace this money for lodger's tax non-promotional fund. And they're asking for potentially two tournaments a year. They believe that they can pull in a number of folks, and the idea would be that any money generated from those tournaments would be in turn returned 50/50. Half of it goes to the Disc Golf Association, the other half would go back to lodger's tax in terms of a repayment for that. And that's sort of our give and take as far as that. The idea would be that the, any charge for the disc golf would go away completely.
Yeah, that's, would be favorable for me, because Rattone Golf Course did not put the disc golf course in.
Right.
There was no expense to you guys.
Absolutely.
So, charging these folks now for that, I feel is very unfair.
Right. And I think this came down to a membership call and feeling like, you know, if we've got to pay a membership fee, then so does everybody else. However, I don't think that the membership truly understood that this was grant money to put this together, A, and B, I don't think they understand the competitive nature of the way that the disc golf is actually sanctioned and the fact that you can play for free in any other disc golf across the country. And so, we want to make that playable and useful for everybody here as well.
Well, like Neil, I've had several complaints from disc golfers that said that they're not getting a fair shake out there, and that sometimes they've even been told that they can't play today because of other players are already playing.
Right.
Well, the part of the golf course, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't interfere with the greens and the fairways.
Well, and I will just say, in defense of the golfers, there is a little bit of concern because a lot of the holes do have areas where you, if you're playing disc golf, you are somewhat in the line of fire when it comes to a golf ball. Now, theoretically, if we're all playing together nicely, the idea would be that disc golfers would certainly play their course and do it for free. They would do it at the same time that golfers are playing, and nobody would be in the line of fire or anything along those lines. The idea would be that while, because it is a golf course first, golfers would have precedent, however, disc golfers could play at the exact same time without any charges moving forward, and that's kind of the concept.
Yeah, I think we could work that and do work out that.
I will say, I do like all the developments and ideas you guys have been working on to get people out there and to have some different events. I think it's really positive for the community. And last summer, at least, I thought the greens were looking great, you know, from what I could see. I don't play golf myself, but my son's on the golf field, and it's been a really great experience just to have the golf course here. It's great, and I know that you guys are maybe looking at hosting a high school tournament, and that's exciting. And, yeah, I have the same concerns about the disc golf, but just from what I understood, it was the course was paid for through lodger's tax funds and park and rec funds. And then I know that it was put in by Boy Scouts, a lot of it, because I was there with them doing it. So, yeah, so I really do feel like the disc golfers need a fair shake there, and I can understand how it's touchy with the membership because they're maybe not fully aware of the situation. But I think if everyone could get along, it could be a wonderful boon to the community of both sports, bringing people from out of town. And I like the idea of golfing for free with the receipt, you know, I think that does put more people here. I think people who golf are going to think, oh, you know, that's a, that's a great thing. I can go golf for free and stay in Rattone. So, and I do think it's one of the most beautiful places in town. The views out there are just incredible, even to sit on a bench and watch someone else golf, so.
If I could just interject, I think the fee was typically because the disc golf is not near the golf course, is not on, not always on the golf course. You're out in the hills. It was to do cleanup, trash, you know, to help in that process. So, it was put out there, but it wasn't put out there for who was going to maintain that. So, part of that was a minimal fee. We started out with $5, we brought it down to $1. We tried to do a membership of $25, that'd give you a two-year membership kind of scenario. What we do with our golfers, when they pay for their membership, then they pay a $2 daily fee. So, that helps pay for the staff, the cleanup, the empty the garbage, those kind of things. Part of that was that. Who was going to clean up that course? Who was going to maintain that course? So, that was just put back into a position. Now, I think 20% of that fee went back to, but I can tell you the fee was minimal. I think we probably last year maybe broke $30, $40, $50, something, and maybe even a little higher than that. But it wasn't, a lot of them would come over, we told them that they have to pay, they went over, you know, they would leave. It wasn't that we were pushing them out, it was just we did have a fee. And there was a couple of months that we decided to go ahead and do a free piece, and that brought a few guys over and they started to play the game. We also have a liquor version out there at the golf course, so we wanted to make sure that we're not entering our liquor license with people that are, might bring their own alcohol on the course, that they're just not familiar with. You can't do that, you know, scenario. So, it was a, it's a tough call. How do we handle that? And that's where we came up. So, now we're trying to go a different direction that would help in that maintenance as well.
One of the biggest things that we have coming up is our annual meeting here in March. And, you know, with your help, if we can kind of get some cooperation through this, we do intend to not only hold a membership meeting but also then put out a letter describing exactly what the terms are, how we are receiving this money potentially, and what that means for disc golfers as well as our membership golfers. And so, there will be some rules set in play that, you know, if you've got disc golfers out there, they own the course just as much as you do, they are not going to pay even though you do, but that is in cooperation with the fact that somebody else actually paid for this disc golf, the course to go in. And if clear that we can make that to our membership, I think the easier it'll be for everybody.
Sure, and I think if we just made it, you know, clear to the disc golfers, hey, you're responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of your course, you know.
And in working with the disc golfers, they've been actually great. In fact, they've offered, they want to move a couple of pins, they want to trim a couple of trees, they want to do some of their own work, and they've always volunteered to do that on their own. And so, the fact that we're not having to come out of pocket as a golf course to maintain that makes a lot of sense to us.
Okay. Well, I think, kind of like to see a little breakdown, maybe of what you're looking at for equipment wise. We'll have to look into that equipment part because I know that's going to be tricky with the auditors and such, so, and the way the statute reads.
Okay.
And Mayor, we can research that a little more, we can get an opinion on that.
Not saying we can't completely get...
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, but I guess, as the golfers say, my opinion would be that's OB.
Yeah, yeah. Good one.
I have one question about the funding aspect. So, 20, or 80% is about $20,000. Is this, would non-promo funds be awarded similar to lodger's tax funds in the fact that it would be reimbursed? Or would it be an outright award, like how specific amount?
Well, it may be difficult for the country club to upfront that amount, and so, I think we can work something out with them for some documentation that goes with that, but I think it'd be maybe difficult for them to do a reimbursement, and I don't want to put...
We would certainly be willing to put together any documentation, whether it's parts, labor, those kinds of things, to make sure that the infrastructure is fixed.
Right.
You know, as far as the equipment goes, if that's out of bounds, I understand that completely. At the same time, you know, we could certainly provide some documentation on what it is that we're actually spending for, if that's something that's required and still open to potential.
That'd be great.
Though I think I would add to the commission is, you know, we have typically used non-promotional funds for debt service, and we're in a period now where the debt's been paid, we don't have debt service. We've accrued some funds, I think we're probably okay there. We've had a lot of discussion on, you know, what we're going to do in this interim period, and then, you know, maybe a bigger project coming up. And so, we've talked about signage, we've talked about improvements at the shooter, but I think that we're talking about a one-time expense.
Right.
And we kind of have a one-time accrual of some funds. I think that's probably, I don't have a current amount for you, and maybe we could finance it, we could look at that, but there's kind of a period here where I think that's probably doable, I would say.
And I'd just, as a golfer, and I used to be a member, but then got busy and you just couldn't, you know, I couldn't justify paying. Have you guys thought about maybe making like just weekend plans?
Say that one more time.
Make like weekend plans? I would buy a package to play on the weekend.
So, we do have that plan now.
I haven't seen one.
One thing I will tell you is that we will do a better job of marketing that to the public.
Yeah, because I was not aware of it. That's something I'd be interested in.
Yeah. So, one of the things that we are going to be offering is kind of a 10-play coupon which we've been offering for years, but you can buy that ahead of time, you buy that in a lump sum, and now you...
Didn't know about that one either, so your marketing needs to get there, yeah?
And we'll certainly up those efforts as well. Again, I brought Jessica in there because one of the things that we believe that we can do is do a better job, not only online but certainly through the radio and...
Absolutely.
...the public avenues that we have to help promote that golf course, not only for the citizens of Rattone but outside of here as well.
I've been asking for years for a weekend package.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool. Right on.
I have one last question.
Yeah.
Talking about the irrigation system and the beautification of the course.
Yes.
What are we doing about the frigging deer?
Yes, okay.
I wanted to ask, Joe, are they, are they tearing up the, they were tearing up the greens the last time I saw them, and I said, it's a problem that we need to address.
Yeah, we talked to Fishing Game. They've come in and talked with the city a little bit about that as well. We're pretty close, as I understood today, that they're trapping out there today. So, they'll trap 200 turkeys. They don't do anything with the deer out there. As I understand it, we're trying to work with Bermejo, the city, to maybe even eliminate some of those deer out there. I'm not sure what the best way of doing that. They would provide fencing all the way around the entire golf course. We know that's probably unlikely because we would still have to pay for concrete and drilling the holes and putting the posts in and manual labor to put that in. We obviously don't have those people to do that, so that would be very difficult to do. So, I don't know who's all here, but they would be looking at maybe having a shoot out there, and that would help out in general as well. When they're in rut, they come out on the golf course and they tear it up. I've got pictures, I can send you pictures and you can look at them. The problem with that is it's at November, October, November, we turn water off. You can't improve anything out there because there's just no water for it to grow again. And of course, thank God, we've gotten some snow this year. Last year, we didn't, so this year, it's kept some of those deer out there. There's about 40 elk that roll in in the middle of the night, and they just, they love tearing up the greens, and they just tromp all over them. It takes us a couple more, at least a month and a half to repair those greens to get them playable. And if they are golfer, everybody knows it's not, how far, it's, you know, you drive for show and putt for note. That's kind of how it works, right? So, the putting is the most important thing, and we really lose out on a lot of play because a lot of the Trinidad guys won't come over there and play because it's trampled on every year. And so, to try to eliminate that, and that would be, there would probably be some restructuring of, that's in city limits, so obviously you can't shoot within city limits. Hopefully, there's some restructuring that's going to be, that could take place. As I understand it, Santa Fe has approved, something like that. It's just a matter of going through the process.
Historically, too, we have trapped out there and relocated animals, but according to Fishing Game, 100% of those animals have died when we've done that in the past. And if those are the survival numbers, we felt like there may be a little more humane way to get this done and get it done quicker, and that is through supervision of Fishing Game to go out there and particularly remove some of those animals immediately. Whether that's shooting or potentially arrows, however we can get them off, they're interested in helping us. So, we're working with them closely. We anticipate a plan for this next fall.
Okay. That would help out greatly. And then, we're going to do some, this, next year or this year, this winter, we'll do some extra work on, we're going to try some magnetic, or not magnetic, but what do you call it, glittery type of streamers, and because it apparently catches their eye and they get spooked and they move on. We do have some blank buckshot that we could shoot at them, but we haven't done any of that. That's not, that's, we're not touching any of that right now, that's all Fishing Game's scenario. They have nets up there right now trying to trap turkeys today. But they have trapped deer and moved them, and they just, they don't survive, so.
What we have noticed, though, is that when the irrigation system is working properly, we can fix and repair those greens much quicker.
Sure.
And if we can get water down to where it needs to go, that helps with the repair and the playability.
Well, I was privy to watching the deer actually fight right on your green, you know, they were tearing the hell out of it and stuff.
There's just not much we can do about it. It would be nice to fence all that off and eliminating some of that, but then that just hurts winter play, and we need that revenue as well.
Sure.
One of the things we've talked about, those potentially fencing off those greens in the wintertime, and with eight-foot snow fence, something like that, so they can't necessarily jump over, and then doing maybe a different temporary green during the winter months. We're open and willing to trying different things, it just comes down to, you know, can we get them repaired in time to...
Yeah, I'd like to see the game department trap them. I've seen them trap them before, and they've released them in Seminole Canyon, and they didn't all die.
Okay.
I know that for a fact.
They've done that, and they keep doing that. It's just, it's like anything, as soon as you take a few out, that opens the gate for a few more to come in.
And that's part of the argument, too, is if we remove those, does that just open up more room for more...
To come in, yeah.
Mainly during running. That's really what the problem is, is really during October, November, December time frame, January, that's when we really see the damage, and we really can't do any repair work on that until we start putting water on the grass.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I'd take a little direction here, then, how do we want to proceed?
Mayor, Commissioner, in regard to the wildlife situation, we've had a couple of meetings in the Mexico game and Fish, and we anticipate that they will come to a commission meeting probably in April and present a management strategy to the commission, and we'll talk to them. In regard to the request, I could work with Devin and his crew as far as bringing you additional detail, and if this works, we could set that up for the March 12th.
Yeah.
That would be great.
That'd be good. I mean, that would give us a chance to answer some of the questions and then go forward. I don't really see an issue with the sprinkler system. I think that can work out. It's the other equipment that we might have a little problem with.
We'll give you a breakdown in case there's an opportunity.
That'd be great.
Then we'll go with the 20,000 towards the sprinkler system, is that...
That's 80%, that's 80% of it, yeah.
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 I'll make a motion to postpone the lodger's tax on porch on your quest from Rattone's Country Club for the sprinkler system improvements until the documents are prepared.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone until we have a breakdown of the information, preferably hopefully by the March 12th meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Devin.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Item C, deliberate gnat on RFP award of contract for on-call engineering services. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, in, for the extended period of time, the city of Rattone has made this contract. It, as stated, allows us to have an engineer on call for various needs, and it's convenient, a lot of towns do this, for smaller projects like municipal arterial program or local government road fund projects and a variety of projects. So, we have had a contract in place, typically as a four-year time period on that, and our existing contract with Engineering Analytics, Inc., has reached the four years. I think that's expired some time in February now, so the city clerk has issued a request for proposals for a new on-call engineering services contract. So, you see a document there from the city clerk in front of you. The city did receive three proposals. This is a qualification-based selection as per the state procurement requirements, and so, we grade those proposals... so we grade those proposals based on their qualifications. Now, you see the cumulative scores of that, and that's put together by a committee of staff here that really deals directly with engineers and tasks that involve the engineering. So that's cumulative score, and of course, they're very close because the three responses that we've got, which is our current engineer, Engineering Analytics, Inc., and Karen is present here to ask questions, if you have questions. Hewitt Zollers and Bohannon Houston, those are the three proposals. I could tell you that I know all three firms personally from my time in engineering. All three very highly qualified firms. As far as qualifications go, there's not a whole lot of difference in that. So you see close scores. Engineering Analytics, Inc. was the highest cumulative score. That's the staff's recommendation to you as to award the on-call contract to Engineering Analytics. We have had that in place for four years. We've done a variety of tasks, a number of tasks with that. Some of those engineering tasks and projects are ongoing, and I think that contract has worked very well. So we're happy that we got responses. I think the little bit of a bump that Engineering Analytics gets out of this is really based on the fact that they invested in establishing an office in Rattone. And, you know, if I call Karen and say, "Let's meet on Hospital Drive in 10 minutes," they're there. And so that's tremendously advantageous to us at the city to have that locally available. With that, Ms. Mayor, I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Barry?
I'll move to approve the contract for on-call engineering services to Engineering Analytics, Inc.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to approve the recommended award to Engineering Analytics, Inc. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to add one thing, Mayor. Typically, the form of that agreement would be that it is an annual agreement that is renewable up to that four-year period, but we renew that annually. We would maintain that provision in the contract.
Any discussion about that? Any questions for that? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure. I guess we'll let you.
I wanted to wait until after you voted. But I did want to say that we really do appreciate the opportunity that we've had for the last four years for that contract. And just to let you guys know, in addition to myself, we hired a engineer from Colorado. We've hired two local field technicians, as well as this week, we hired a high school student who's very interested in engineering.
Great.
So we're really trying to, you know, develop engineering within the community and really keep it here in Rattone, so.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
And we appreciate the opportunity for the next four years.
Absolutely. Thank you for what you do.
Any questions?
Good job.
Yeah.
All righty. Item D, deliberate and act on a bid award for OTR Tire and Miscellaneous Tire Recycling Project. Is that going to be you, Mr. Barry, or Mr. Phillips?
Mayor, that's going to be Mr. Phillips.
Mayor, Commissioner, we'll keep it short and sweet since it looks like we've got a lengthy agenda. We received a $25,000 grant from the New Mexico Environment Department requiring no matching funds to get rid of OTR and miscellaneous tires. These are 150 large and older-sized tires and up, 2,000 semi-truck-sized tires, and 100 skid steer tires. We did receive two bids. The low bid is Arthur Roloff at $24,850. That includes all taxes and fees. It is below the amount we have for our grant agreement, so we'll be putting $0 in. It'll go a long way towards getting rid of tires that we've had for many, many years, and I would recommend that we award this contract to Arthur Roloff in the amount of $24,850. I stand for any questions if you have.
Any questions for Mr. Phillips?
I'm there.
I make a motion to approve the bid award for OTR Tire and Miscellaneous Tire Recycling Project to Arthur Roloff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the award. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed?
I would just add, Mayor and Commissioner, if we could, you'll notice on the project number, this is funded through the rate program through Solid Waste Bureau. We're currently in that cycle of applying for these funds again, but Jason has taken care of that for a number of years, and we've had success. So we have this project where we're getting rid of large tires. Jason has an additional project as well that he was telling me about today.
We've got two semi-exciting things on this front. Tire's been a problem for a long time. We applied for a $25,000 grant to buy a tire cutter. If you've got a tire into enough pieces, it's no longer considered a tire under the regulations. So your disposal costs go way down, and part of our long-term strategy is to cut these tires, haul them off as solid waste, and not stockpile them anymore, which was where we kind of got into trouble. We took ownership of that tire cutter last week, had some assembly that was acquired. Today, fired it up for the first time, and looks like it should easily cut 60 to 100 tires per hour.
Wow.
Should be able to knock out everything we've got left. And now we're looking at the current rate cycle, and since, knock on wood, if everything goes well, we won't have any tires left. They do offer a number of recycled tire products, and it's picnic tables that are made out of post-consumer recycled tires. So this year, our grant application will be more things for our parts rather than tires to haul off, so. Good thing the tire run-
Right. I saw at the, I think it was at the state convention in Clovis or Roswell, they had fences made from recycled tires. It was pretty cool looking.
And these picnic tables and park benches, they're not low-quality looking stuff.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be a good way to decorate our parks and not have much tire coming around.
And Jason, I know we've talked about this before, but over the years, over the last four years, do you have a good idea of how many tires we disposed of?
Probably in the neighborhood of 50,000 tires.
Wow.
The tire bales that were sitting that we hauled off four years ago to our new method of not baling tires, somewhere in the neighborhood of 50,000 tires.
Wow.
Good to be rid of them.
Yes.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Item E, deliberate and act on approval of quote for purchase of F-250 Ford truck for the Rattone Fire Department from Fillon Ford of Rattone. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, I am really happy to have all of these department heads here today, so I'd like to call on Chief Espinoza to come and aid on this one.
All right.
Well, over the years, we've purchased trucks back in 2006. We have a big fleet increase since then. We have a lot of vehicles, so now we're in the process of trying to get those replaced. Fillon Ford was the winner of it of Rattone. We have a bid from Fillon Ford, car on screens, and of-
Bradley.
And we did not receive a bid from Cook Motor and Trinidad, so.
Cool.
So, Mayor and Commissioner, you see the bid tabulation there in front of you for the 2019 Ford F-250 four-wheel-drive pickup. And Chief, one of the uses for this is you carry fuel to our wildland events, correct?
Yes. So it'll be a chase vehicle that we'll use that'll have fuel onboard, because sometimes we don't get places where there's any fuel.
Right.
So we'll carry our own fuel and supply our own equipment with fuel.
That's great.
So you see the low bid from Fillon Ford of Rattone, $31,230 is their bid on the vehicle.
And these are fire funds?
These are fire funds, yes.
Fire grants.
Yeah. My land grants is what that one's going to come from.
Cool.
Great.
Any questions for the chief? entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the quote for purchase of the F-250 Ford truck for Rattone Fire Department from Fillon Ford of Rattone for $31,230.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the purchase of a truck from Fillon Ford of Rattone. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on mutual aid agreement between Rattone Fire and Emergency Services and the Village of Simroon. We also have item G that Springer, I think, since the chief is here, we can tackle them both at the same time, if that's all right with you, Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, you do have two really identical agreements for the two communities with City of Rattone and Rattone Fire and Emergency Services, and it is an agreement basically to, in various emergency situations, to share, call on each other and share personnel, equipment, materials, and other forms of assistance. And Chief, I'll let you fill in the blanks from there.
Yes, this agreement is just a cookie-cutter agreement that we can call upon one another. Simroon's, the last time we did one of those was in 2007, so we're re-updating that one. Springer ambulance was, is down. They're going to be out of service, so they're trying to get their service back up and running again. So we are renewing that contract with them. So we have been, us and Simroon have been covering whole county for these ambulance service calls.
Now, while we may wind up, you know, billing somebody else on that, we don't bill each other and call on each other for assistance.
Right.
So you see that in the agreement.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Barry or the chief?
Okay.
Motion to approve F and G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both items, F and G, mutual aid agreements between Rattone and the Village of Simroon and the town of Springer. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Agreement, RTN 19-02, for installation of NAVAIDS PAPIs runway 0220. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commissioner, at Rattone Municipal Airport, we have talked to Federal Aviation Administration and State Aviation about our navigational aids. So we're talking about the primary runway, runway 220, and we were really, either direction that you're approaching the primary runway, you would have these navigational aids available to you. So currently, we have a PLAZI system at the airport, and that means a pulse light approach slope indicator, which is a visual approach aid for use in visual flight conditions that assist the execution of a stabilized approach by transmitting a visible beam up the approach from a position adjacent to the intended touchdown point on the runway. So we would propose to replace the old PLAZI system with a precision approach path indicator, which essentially is the same description. We would generate a visible beam to the pilot to help them stay on the correct approach slope. So that's a PAPI system, precision approach path indicator. You see a grant agreement in your packet from New Mexico State Aviation, and it's something that we've talked about before. It seems a little backwards here, but we would take this step where we would accept the grant agreement from State Aviation, and they are committing to 5% of the cost of a project, which we estimate to be $166,000. And then additionally, the City of Rattone would commit to 5% of the cost of the project, 5% of the $166,000. So that's about $8,300 bucks for them and $8,300 for the City of Rattone. And then the remaining 90% would be Federal Aviation Administration. So we're talking to FAA. We have our annual entitlement of $150,000 for Rattone Municipal Airport. We've done pretty well in past years with the taxiway rehabilitation, so we feel pretty fortunate to get this funded in 2019. So that would be the total of the $166,000 for the project. The next item will be consideration of an engineering task order for our airport engineer, and upon your approval there, they will proceed into the design of the system. We will ask for bids. We will receive bids, bring that to the commission, award the bid, and then after all that's done, we'll bring you a Federal Aviation Administration grant agreement and proceed along with the project. So it seems a little backwards, but that's kind of how we work with FAA funds. So first is the aviation division grant to the City of Rattone. I believe the amount is $8333.
Yeah. Yep.
Is the, which budget year are we going to pull our 5% from? Just out of curiosity, is it this budget year or a little-
Mayor and Commissioner, I think that by the time we go through the process, we're going to be in the upcoming budget year.
Just in case it does fall in this budget year, I have included it in the budget adjustment that we're going to approve this evening. So that doesn't mean we have to spend the money, but at least-
Right.
We can approve it tonight and allocate the funds if needed.
Okay.
And we do have our fixed base operators present here. Dusty, I don't know if you have any comments on the navigational aids? Seem like an important thing for our traffic out there, but you care to make any comments on?
Get more customers flying in, you know, looks better for, say, UPS or somebody to move over.
Cool.
You know, because we have that, that NAVAID to come in. And not only that, the PLAZI's out of service right now.
So, there we go.
I saw that note on there that even when it does work, it burns through bulbs like crazy. That was very straightforward right there.
Mr. Barry, can you say again, what does PLAZI stand for?
Well-
Light Slope Indicator is what I wrote down.
I've got that right here. That's a pulse light approach slope indicator.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's very nice.
I had to look that up. That's what it is.
I can move you to approve.
Go ahead.
Molden Corbin Task Order Number 2018-5 to replace PLAZI with-
We're on the one above it still, Doc. That's all right.
They're both kind of together.
They're kind of together, but we're on the grant agreement.
Okay, I'll jump back up. Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Agreement, RTN-19-02, for installation of the NavAIDS PAPI runway 0220.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve grant agreement number RTN 1902. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item I, deliberate and act on Molden Corbin Task Order Number 2018-5 to replace the PLAZI with the PAPI-designed bidding and construction phase services. Mr. Barry, you kind of went through that, but-
Mayor and Commissioner, you see, this is an eligible expense, and you see the proposed cost of engineering services on the project is $39,000 and some change. So by eligible, that means that that would be wrapped into that total project cost that we talked about. FAA will pay 90% of that cost. Since we don't have FAA funds until later, the engineer will not expect us to upfront that, so they will receive payment on the back end of the project. But we would commit again to 5% of what the $39,000 that you see. We have, Molden Corbin is our contract engineer for airport services. We got them under, renewed their contract some time back, so this is a task order under that general services agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Barry?
Yes, that's 7.87, will that ever be changed?
That's Albuquerque's-
7.875, what?
Yeah, they, it probably will remain the same because with professional services, they will bill us at their, where the engineering services are generated. That's at the Albuquerque office. office, whereas construction is generated at the construction site, that would be at the Colfax County rate, but that would be at their, at their engineering office location. That's an advantage to having a, an engineer in Raton.
And we'll move to approve Task Order Number two thousand eighteen dash five.
Second. Yeah, motion and a second to approve the Task Order of Molden Corbin, twenty-eighteen dash five for the airport construction. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on Resolution twenty-nineteen dash twelve, January twenty-nineteen, financial reports. Michael Ann?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, in your packet this evening is our report for January. You'll see under our financial summary that our general fund available cash balance was one million, seven twenty-eight, five sixty-nine. I've also summarized for you the ending cash balances and the remaining funds. We did receive the grocery receipts tax distribution last week, which does reflect our December sales. It was down about fifty thousand dollars per what we received this time last year, which we anticipated due to not having Kmart. We know that during the holiday season, they were quite busy. But in terms of our projections, projections for the fiscal year, we did anticipate that decrease, and so we are showing a point eight zero percent decrease below our budgeted projection, which is just slightly below twenty thousand dollars year-to-date. We are still concerned that we could see this trend over the next couple of months. We only have, you know, probably four more distributions for this fiscal year, so it makes it hard to really forecast where we're gonna be until we get the small cities assistance distribution. The legislative session will end on March sixteenth, so we should receive that distribution shortly after that. Other than that, the volatility we've seen in the grocery receipts will also make it difficult to forecast for the next fiscal year. So starting next month, we'll start having some budget discussions for FY twenty-twenty. And as you know, we'll have to have an interim budget prepared and submitted by June first, so these next couple of months will be really busy. I've also provided you with the detailed grocery receipts report that gives you a comparison over the last few years. And then, I think, looking at our general fund, financial report, we're seven twelfths into the fiscal year, so we should be right at about fifty-eight point three percent. So our revenue, we did collect the first half of the property tax. We got a distribution late December and one early January, so we won't receive any additional property tax until late May, early June. As far as our departments, we are running slightly under that fifty-eight point three percent. We're at fifty-five point nine four percent overall, so, you know, we're trying to save where we can and delay any sort of expenditures into the next fiscal year if needed. Some of our departments, we do run a little bit high during the fiscal year, but that's because we have a couple grant-funded positions, like the juvenile justice coordinator and one police officer that are paid from the general fund, and then we reclassify that once we receive the reimbursements from those grants. But I do have to pay them out of the general fund until we get those reimbursements. So once we do that, we would still be well below fifty-five percent that we're running right now.
Cool.
Is there any questions?
No questions, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution twenty-nineteen dash twelve, January twenty-nineteen, financial reports.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen twelve, January twenty-nineteen, financial reports. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K.
I just wanna thank Michael Ann for all the work that she came up with.
Absolutely.
For keeping us responsible physically, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Deliberate and act on Resolution twenty-nineteen dash thirteen, NMFA Aquatic Center Fiscal Nineteen Additional Debt Payment. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, some years ago, City Commission had enacted a quarter cent increment of grocery receipts tax to accomplish several things. Number one is to try to get early payments of debt on the aquatic center, and you'll remember that we have two different notes, two different debts on that, and try to accelerate payment and get out from under that. And then, secondly, to fund improvements or repairs or equipment replacements on big-ticket items, like last year, remember, we had a problem with the boiler. So we have a source of funds to go to for those. And then, lastly, in that ordinance that was enacted by the commission, it could go towards things like energy conservation measures for the building, and that, of course, is a big energy user. So how that has worked is, as those funds come in on a monthly distribution, Michael Ann accrues those into a fund, and then at this time of the year, we decide how we're, what the balance is, and that's really based on what's come in and then what we have expensed out for things like the boiler repair. And after about eight years of operation, we're starting to see, you know, regular expenses on keeping the pool running. There are a number of mechanical systems there that periodically, and we can expect this as we go along, are gonna require repair or replacement. So we really, it's difficult to predict that during the year, so we go to these accrued funds and we fund those, and, and at this time of year, we can make a judgment on how much can go towards early debt retirement. And then with your consideration of the resolution, we would contact New Mexico Finance Authority and work with them as far as making that, that early payment. So it's something that we've done, I think, for the past three years. Michael Ann has done the evaluation on this. It went to the Financial Advisory Committee, and they voted on that. And the recommendation is that we take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of those accrued funds and put towards debt retirement. Now, at that point, Michael Ann's got a little more information for you on the two various notes, and we can talk about how this is gonna look going forward, but the resolution that you have would be to take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of those accrued funds and put towards debt retirement. Michael Ann, leaving some stuff out, so.
Really, the only change we've made in the resolution this year, I did find out that we do have two notes. We had one that we took out in two thousand and seven and another one in two thousand and nine. The two thousand and seven was the only one that was eligible for us to make additional principal payments on up until this year. So now, starting January, the two thousand note is what they call callable, and that we are permitted to also make additional debt payments on that one, so principal payments. I have reached out to NMFA, I did not hear back from them as of today. I think the question is, I was just seeking some advice from them, if it would be best to apply the full hundred and fifty thousand possibly to the two thousand and nine or split it between the two. The two thousand and nine note is closer to about five percent interest, where the two thousand and seven note was slightly under four percent. So I think some of the discussions we had with the Financial Advisory Committee was possibly if the other one has a higher interest, it might be more advantageous to start trying to pay that one off as quick as possible. So I would recommend that we approve this so that I can reach out to them and give the proper forty-five day notice. These debt payments are due by May first, but I guess with your approval, you could also authorize me to work that out with them, how we would allocate the funds between the two, the two notes.
Yes, sir. Are you all, if you're raising your hand?
I think we, you know, it's hard to say, I mean, one has a higher interest rate, I don't know if that's really the, I mean, it may be the best strategy to try to pay one of these notes off, and then really, I think I would agree with Michael Ann, if we just let her have that communication with NMFA, come up with, you know, some combination of how we're gonna do that, and then that's probably the strategy going forward. But we can report back to you on that, but I would just ask you all for permission to proceed along with this forty-five day notice.
Any questions? Comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen dash thirteen at New Mexico Financial NMFA Aquatic Center Fiscal Year Nineteen Additional Debt Payment with the understanding that, that Mr. Berry and Michael Ann have permission to consider how to split that payment or put it towards one or the other note.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution twenty-nineteen thirteen as amended to allow Mr. Berry and Michael Ann to work out the details. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution twenty-nineteen dash fourteen, City of Raton, Fiscal Year Nineteen Budget Adjustment Number Ten. Michael Ann?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, in your packet is Budget Adjustment Number Ten. You will see that it does reflect the action that you took earlier this evening for the possibility if we do the navigational aids at the airport, which was the match of eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. We also have several just line item adjustments within some of our various funds. Some, I think, two or three budget adjustments ago, NMFA, not NMFA, DFA, had actually asked me to create some line items or at least budget some funds for some of the interest income line items, and a lot of times those are hard to budget for 'cause we don't know how much interest they're gonna generate. So I've just kinda tried to estimate on some of those and include those so that they would be part of our third quarter report to DFA. You will see in our Fund Two Seventeen, which is our street improvement fund, despite grocery receipts being down, we have seen an increase in our gas tax, and so we've estimated that approximately about a hundred thousand dollar increase by year-end, so I am requesting an increase there. Some of those funds will go to some various projects that we're working on in the fiscal year, but the majority of them will just go into the reserve to be used for projects next year. Other than that, I think the other ones are fairly straightforward. And the capital projects is also where we budget for the airport grant for the FAA portion and the state portion. And I think those were the major highlights. Is there any questions?
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen thirteen, City of Raton, FY nineteen nineteen adjustment.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen dash fourteen, Budget Adjustment, Fiscal Year Nineteen Number Ten. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item N, City Managers Report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. On February twentieth, along with most of you, I attended municipal day in Santa Fe. That's an event put on by New Mexico Municipal League to talk about and, and give municipalities an update as far as activities in the legislature. What we learned there is that there are, there's a lot of legislation, a lot of bills out there, really some bills covering everything, some different nature of bills from what we've seen in past years, some things dealing with tax reform, some things dealing with regulations with firearms and registration on those. There is a lot of legislation to go through, so we try to track those things that are pertinent to Raton. It's also a chance to meet and talk to legislators and state government officials. We had met the state auditor and the public lands director at the Capitol and got a chance to talk to them. We had also met with our elected representatives down there, and again, most of you were present there, where principally we talked about capital outlay, how that's shaping up, and I think one thing we found out is that there really is anticipated to be a greater amount of capital outlay, more funding going to the law enforcement fund, the fire fund, and then local government road funds. Those are all important to us, those are programs that we use quite a bit and we talk about quite a bit, so good information there. The city of Raton, specifically Raton Water Works, did receive an award, and I've got some photos here, those of you on the water board have seen this. And this photo would be our chief plant operator of our wastewater treatment plant, Lloyd Wakefield, accepting the award on behalf of the city of Raton. I'll pass those around. The award is the most improved facility for the Raton Wastewater Treatment Plant, and that's awarded by the New Mexico Water and Wastewater Association, so. That's, that's an honor for Dan and his staff at the wastewater treatment plant. Not something that we think about typically, but somebody does think about what's going on at that plant every single day and a lot of nights as well, and so we have appreciation for that staff that works there. Additionally, we were notified that the Raton Multimodal Project has received an award. So we've been awarded a New Mexico Engineering Excellence Award. That's awarded by the American Council of Engineering Companies in their special projects category. Our engineer on that project is Han and Houston, Inc., they did a, a great job. We anticipate attending an awards ceremony in April, and so we'll report back to you on that. Lastly, Mayor and Commission, I would happily announce to you that we had two of our dispatchers, Rebecca Maras and Alberta Vehill, last Friday were graduates of the academy and now come back to us as certified dispatchers, and so congratulations to them.
Absolutely.
That's all, Amber.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry? Any other comments from anyone? I think we oughta give Dan a round of applause from us, don't you guys?
Woo-hoo!
Pass it on to your crew. Well, good job. All right, item N, close executive session pursuant to ten dash fifteen, that's one H five, collective bargaining between the city of Raton, Raton firefighters local twenty-three seventy-eight. Okay, the motion to enter into that.
I will so move.
A motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who was the second, I'm sorry?
Don. Can I have two minutes?
Yeah.